I'm so happy today to have Tiffany Penson here. Thanks for coming Tiffany. Um, I'm really excited to talk to you. Um, you got referred to me from uh Tiana, who's a good friend of mine. She's been on the show a long time ago, but um, but yeah, thanks for coming today.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Nice to meet you too.
Yeah. Um, I was gonna say you're the ninth city candidate I've had. I'm trying to do as many as I can. There's like eighty-five right now. But you are the first one from District Two, which I'm really happy about. I'm happy to have somebody from District Two.
Oh, I love being the first one for our district.
I wish I had like an air horn button where I could hit that, but um, yeah, um, I'm curious, like just tell people about your district and why you started running and how things are going right now.
So District Two, that's north and northeast Portland. I was born and raised in north and northeast Portland. I actually live in that house that I was raised in. And so in the Concordia area, so I really am rooted in my neighborhood. I decided to run because I've worked for the city for over twenty years. I have a lot of experience. I understand the operations. I know where the gaps are. I'm pragmatic. I'm steadfast. I have vision and I'm solutions oriented. I am all of my roles. I've always seen the city as one city, even though it was made up of a lot of bureaus, which people don't even really know. I view this city as one city. And so how do we work collaboratively, effectively to ensure that we are delivering the services that our citizens need? I think about to um, how I value our people, how I value our communities. All my work has reflected that. I think about my ability to um, build relationships. I have partnerships. My work as being elected to Portland Community College Board, I understand a legislative body. I know policy and budget are key and how you hold people accountable is your city manager or city administrator to operationalize the policy. And so I will say I am the most qualified be in this race because I do know the operation and I currently work in the operations and I'm always working to make change. So we can better take care of our internal people and also how we deliver services. And I just think that's important.
Yeah. Yeah. And I do think we were talking a little before you started here, but I do think you are maybe the most qualified or like the most experienced person I've talked to on here. Um, and I just think that's really important. And yeah, I want to talk more about this, like D, I call it like de-siloing kind of process, like you keep talking about. We're one city. We're not all these separate bureaus and but I did want to quickly mention, I just wanted to show this card because I've been trying to collect these. And I missed you at this future Portland event, but if you're trying to collect these and you see Tiffany get one of these cards, they're awesome. Um, but yeah, um. Let me start with this. I wanted to ask about, and this kind of goes in with, I was just saying, you have this big mantra of like services, not bureaus. And that, and that's kind of rooted in deliverables and results and that kind of thing. Is that kind of what you're talking about with that?
Yeah, I think it's a great opportunity. We're moving from, the bureaus will still exist, but they're in service areas. And so I think that's really key because the like bureaus. Right? I think it's an opportunity for them to create common goals and how they're going to deliver the goals as one. I think it gives people, um, it gives our bureaus and our directors an opportunity to work together, to be collaborative and to really understand what the public really needs at that time to have those joint conversations. You know, um, life to me is about relationships. And so I think the more opportunity that you have to build effective relationships, the better you are at whatever you're trying to deliver, right? And this city is at a pivotal moment, a critical moment, and also a moment that's full of opportunity. And so while yes, we have our challenges and we all know what they are, right? This is a time to look at it as opportunity. And so to have the collaboration in service areas, I think is one of the most effective ways that we're going to get there. It's also a way, how do we hold people accountable? I think it helps us hold people accountable because my goal, my vision for it is each service area, you will know what are their top three things that were there working on this fiscal year? And then how does, how does what each service area deliver roll up into those top three things? And that's how I envision it.
Yeah, it's a really cool idea and it's like, I can visualize it because maybe I'm super, you know, political into the city and stuff, but I just think that's so smart because like you're saying, there's a lot of opportunity to improve this stuff. And I don't want to say that every bureau is just like totally working on their own and siloed right now. You would know better than me, but, but there's a lot of opportunity to improve all that stuff. And um, you know, if there's common goals and there's shared resources, these guys can just work together. And, and like you said, I think that's also a good point of if there's priorities, you can kind of triage the service areas to their specific needs.
Yes. And then also I think when you think about communication out to the public, right? It's looks like a team.
Yeah.
We're here collectively at a team, as a team, we're working together. We understand the priorities because that's really what people want. We understand the services that people need and here's what we deliver. And I just think the team piece of it, because a lot of folks, when you're out there talking, there are a lot of the comments are, we're not working together, whether that's with the county or the state or the city. People want to see us working together effectively, delivering services. And so I'm excited just in this new form of government because in my mind, I'm thinking one city. Every policy, every program, everything that I've created has always touched across the whole city. No matter what bureau that I've been in, whether it was creating, identifying and creating the need for the First Supplier Diversity Officer back in two thousand nine or ten. That was to specifically work with minority women, uh, veteran owned business and small businesses. Uh, building technical assistance, right? And access to contracts. That, that was for the whole entire city.
Okay.
To access.
And is that, right? You mean, you like contract with those businesses for all bureaus?
So, so what I did was I went out, I outreach, I met these businesses. I, I decided what kind of business technical assistance that they needed.
I see.
Found that, supported that and then provided access to city contracts. So that's working with bureaus. Hey, we have X business over here that does that kind of work. Let me introduce you.
That's great.
And so that, that's for all bureaus. That was for all bureaus to access. And now that role has morphed into a role called inclusive business manager. And so just the things that I've, I've, how I work. I've always thought about how can all of us access this?
Yeah.
To make us better, to provide access to opportunity, even with the youth program. Um, we do summer works, right? Internships. Um, I've been doing that since two thousand nine under um, Mayor Adams. And so it is like, here's, we have all these youth bureaus. Please create great, great opportunities for these youth to learn, get educated, get a look into all the career pathways. It's bureau wide. And I have a list of things that I've done like that, but what I'm trying to say to you, I've always thought as one city. And so when I see this opportunity, it is our opportunity to think as one city.
Yeah, and I totally.
It's awesome, actually.
No, I think it is. Yeah, I think it is awesome. Um, because it's like, you know, I don't know, maybe it's just me. I feel like it's really rare to find somebody like you who is bureau agnostic. I hope I'm saying that right, but you know, you're working for people regardless of bureaus. You're not dedicated to just one piece of the city. You're just helping out. Regardless of which, you know, division or bureau you're in, you're just there to connect people and help, you know, the people of Portland. And um, that's kind of rare, it seems like. I don't know.
Yeah, and I, in my head, I don't have a lane.
Yeah, exactly. Right? Because like there's, and I'm not, I won't name names, but there's people who are currently, you know, commissioners that are running and that's my fear with them is that like, they're so used to just taking care of their own bureaus that they're not looking at the big picture like you are.
Picture. And like I said, um, I've had several positions. And one thing about me is that I learned about myself in exploring this whole run for office. I'm not driven by money and I'm not driven by titles. And I've moved a lot of work that's way above my pay grade, but this is how I see it. Our people are internal and external customer, and I include internal because you have to take care of them so they can better take care of the external customer. And how I think about it, if there is something that we can do better, if there is something that is missing and I have an idea, then I feel like it's my responsibility to say, hey, I got an idea and here's a possible solution. And then also understand who do you need to get that to, to get it implemented if it's just not yourself.
Right.
And I firmly believe that.
Yeah, and that's, like, yeah, I said some, it's so important because people without that experience, like it'd be hard enough even without this new city government to know who to talk to for it to like implement certain things. But you have such a great starting point with that, just doing, you know, all the work you've done in the past and um.
And yeah, when I think about, um, like I have a program that I implement it called We Are Better Together. And really, it is um, sponsoring and supporting culturally based organizations that provide wraparound services. So such as business technical assistance to minority and women and veteran owned businesses. It can be things around education. It can be organizations like um, P O, P O I C, S C I, ERCO, that provide wraparound services to youth and families. Those types of things. And I created, I call it We Are Better Together. And those organizations will request sponsorships or requests elected officials or staff to show up for their events and all of that. And I think it's our role as a city to support those organizations that take care of people.
Yeah.
Right? So um, and my whole thing is I have a whole bunch of bureaus that we collaborate with and, and I broker funding and share with them to help meet the needs. And so that's just another example of how I think about as one. And so when we show up, it's the city of Portland, We Are Better Together. It's not individual bureaus because people need to see us as one. And when people go, oh, my water bill is this when I'm out at these events, I don't say, oh, that's not me. You know what? I take their name and number. I hunt it down inside and then I connect them to an actual person.
Which is important, yeah.
Yes.
I've heard a lot of people, you know, no matter what bureau does, say like they can't get a human being on the other line and stuff. And um, that's just great. Yeah, it's just, I don't know. I've followed the city politics for a long time and hearing this is just like blowing my mind because I've never heard people talk about like cross-bureau stuff in the same, in the way you're talking about today. Like, I don't know, it's just, everyone's usually just like, we gotta, you know, it's all about that improving P bot or improving the water bureau or whatever, you know, bureau that a commissioner's in charge of, but I just love what you're saying.
No, yeah.
I wish we had more of this um, kind of conversation and, and language, but um, yeah, I also wanted to ask about kind of in the same vein, this annual budget report you, you uh, talk about on your website. Um, it really appealed to me just because like, I love politics, like I mentioned a few times, but I'm not nerdy enough to look at the several hundred page budget and figure out what the hell that means and um.
Neither have I.
So yeah, like, just you, you know, the way you describe it, a little like dashboard with plain language is to see where your money's going. Here's what we use it for. Here's maybe what next year we could add more to or subtract or whatever. I just think that's a really cool idea. Um, and I hadn't heard that idea yet.
And so yes, you need a budget process. So one of the things, and this is, we go for fiscal year. So it's July one to June thirtieth. And a lot of people don't even know that. I like just thinking about that.
Or it's just weird. Like to me, that's weird that it's not just January through December.
I don't know either. So don't even get me there, but that's what we go, um, fiscal year. And so when you think about the budget and yes, you gotta have the in-depth detail and that, some people read that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I'm not taking away for those folks. But I was thinking, what would it be like to have a dashboard that you can go on and look? So if we have identified three priorities, let's just, what would it be like to actually track? How much, how many resources and revenue was allocated to solving that priority or focusing on that priority? And then be able to track it like in the dashboard throughout the fiscal year. And so what would that really look like? And then when it came time to the next budget cycle, I think people would understand, like, why are they asking for more money for this? Or why are they decreasing? You know, the funding for this. They could really understand the why.
Yeah.
Well, if we are trying to solve a priority and we're not quite there, let's say we have, we haven't reached the needs in southeast Portland, but we've gone through most of the money, then we need to reach the needs of southeast Portland and this is why. So just some more plain language. And I say that and I'm a city employee through and through.
Yeah.
I believe in our people. I have great working relationships with our people and I am one of those folks. And so I will always do the things to uplift our people, make sure they have the resources and things that they need first to better deliver services. So when I think about um, budgets, I sit even in my, and I have a small budget for my team.
Yeah.
But when I have my budget meetings, sometimes I walk, I go, so am I getting the money or not? I'm like, was that a yes?
Yeah.
So.
And that's how I feel. That's how I feel with like the main budget. It's like, that's, that's interesting and we need that for legal, you know, reasons or whatever, but for ninety percent of the public, that's not doing us any favor. Like we can't make heads or tails out of that. Um, so I just think that's such a great idea. Something people can look at, um, and not have to dig through the weeds.
And I, and again, I'm not for sure how that looks, but a dashboard would be, um, in my initial thought, uh, understanding the priorities, the metrics, creating the metrics. How do you track? How, how are we holding um, the city administrator accountable for operationalizing our policies and budget around the priorities? And just being able to tick, like a tick, tick it off, look and see, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so now it's December and we've accomplished this goal with this money, or we didn't accomplish and will need this much by the next, to ask for the next fiscal year.
Yeah. Yeah.
People just want to see their money.
Where it's going.
Working.
Yeah.
And where it's going, like, what are my taxes going to? What is being solved? How is my, uh, what are livability, safety? They just want to see it.
Yeah.
That's it.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's a great idea. Um, and I'd love to see it. Yeah. Um, let me see here. Uh, I was gonna ask quickly about the relationship with the city and the county and how you kind of would deal with that if you were in office.
So because I have relationships with all of the government entities, it is our responsibility as an elected official to be communicating, to be collaborative, to be transparent and to be working together. That is what the people expect of us.
Yeah.
And so it takes all of the government entities working together to build a livable city, to address public safety issues, to address houselessness, to address all of the things. And so um, for uh, people to expect anything less, it's, it's unacceptable.
Yeah.
It is the expectation. And it literally should be go without being said. But if it needs to be said, and if policy, strong policy needs to be created to ensure that everybody that has the honor to sit in these seats, then maybe we need to set policy. But it's my hope that the twelve folks understand that coming in, that it is our job to work with the other, other government agencies to be effective.
It's, yeah, I was just thinking, when you're saying that's weird, because I, like, I, I feel like I grew up in this era of like, even with national politics and stuff of like, we're in the, the time of transparency.
Yeah.
And I just feel like some of that's been lost, but over the past, I don't know, ten years here. But I just totally agree with what you're saying. And like, we need to just really laser focus on transparency and like between the county and the city and all that stuff. And um, the more we have that, the more the public will just be like, yeah, this is, you know, we can see everything that's going on here and
Yeah.
there's no issues. Um, or if there is, we can talk about it.
We can talk about it. That's what people expect for us to talk about it. There's a couple of things. The city, so in twenty twenty, the city um, uh, passed um, our core values, right? And so the core values are anti-racism, equity, communication, collaboration, transparency and fiscal responsibility. In that I worked with, um, and thinking about those words, right? You have to think about how do they show up in the operation? So my current role in people and culture is how do those core values show up in the operation? And so when you think about people and you think about culture, you have to build it on values. And so when I think about that and you think about communication, you think about collaboration, think about transparency, fiscal responsibility, all of those, you have to model that. And so ways that those things show up is how do we work across other um, uh, government entities with community-based organizations, with people? How, how do we work? When I think about it internally and things that I'm working on is the recruitment, hiring and retention. Talent management. We need to effectively manage talent within the city too. And so that is my number one thought process and it's fairly new. And so I'm thinking about, we have to manage talent because we need the best talent to be creative.
Yeah.
Solutions oriented, deliver services to our folks.
Yeah. Effects our whole performance.
Exactly. Exactly. And so just thinking about who do we want to see? The city is a great place to work. Lots of opportunities, many career pathways, things like that. But when you look across, not just even at the city, but in uh, this city, uh, the state, hiring the best and brightest is important. We struggle in the areas of retention too. And so we gotta look at those things.
Yeah, no, that's, I've actually never, I don't know if anyone's ever brought that up, but it's just interesting with somebody with your insight to bring that up because it is a great, you know, for any even like company or organization, that's just such a huge component of getting the performance you want out of people and um, and also just making people happy with their job and stuff.
Yeah, and, and um, pouring into their professional development, investing in employees. And so um, everything, I know people are like, you know, how does this relate to how you deliver services? It is vital. It is vital.
Yeah, well, if you have constant turnover and people that aren't happy in their real roles, I can see how we're not getting results if, you know, there's just a staff that's constantly changing and um, but yeah, that's a, that's a great point. I actually never thought of it. I wa, I was thinking a second ago, feel free to, you don't have to answer this, you know, but I feel like you, you could answer this because you have such good insight of what the upcoming city manager, can you like tell people what they'll be doing and their function is and stuff like that? Because I still don't even know that. I don't know.
So as I understand, so it's city administrator.
Administrator, sorry.
Yes, city administrator and they will be operationalizing the policy and the budget.
Right. That's all I know is like they, they do the bureaus.
Yes, basically. And that, and so, so currently what we have now is um, the current elected officials, they're kind of hands-ons with the bureaus.
Yeah.
But the bureaus have directors. And so I'm always from the vein of if you hire the best and the most qualified, that you trust those folks to execute the work and do the work. Because they're, they're the expert. Now, does it mean that you don't have reporting back mechanisms and things like that? It, it, yeah, you have those things, but currently, right now, the elected officials are some more hands-on than others. And so with this new form, right? It will keep us in the legislative space, right? The policy and budget place. And then the city administrator, that's his role to work with the deputy city administrators. And then the deputy city administrators work with the directors of those service areas.
Okay.
And so what that means to me, because I like to speak about me.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Because you know, I'd be having my other ideas in my head. So what that, what that means to me is it's streamlining um, effective services and accountability. Like you know who to go to, to hold the, the, you know who to hold accountable. And so we would be holding the city administrator and the mayor accountable. You know exactly where to go.
Yeah.
And so that's how I think of it.
Okay. Yeah, no, I like that. Yeah. I've, I don't think I've ever asked anyone that and I, I'm trying to learn more about all this stuff as the election comes closer. Um, but that's basically.
We're learning together.
Yeah, that's, all, all I knew before that was basically they'll take, you know, the bureau stuff over and that alleviates the commissioners, but I, you painted a better picture of it, me, where they'll deal with these deputy administrators and that kind of thing and, you know.
Yeah, they, they're, they've, right now, they're currently put in this infrastructure where it's the city administrators and then there's deputy city administrators over each of the service areas. And then the bureaus, right, are in service areas. Those bureaus have directors. So.
It's somebody, yeah, yeah. The different layers of management is interesting.
It's some layers.
Yeah. It does seem like, you know.
We're gonna leave that one alone right now.
No, I'm not, I'm not throwing shade at it, but uh, it's just, uh, it does seem like a much better, you know, everyone like seems to agree that that's a better way to have the commission. It's just like, you know, we're not going to assign bureaus to these people and they're not going to spend time dealing with them in the same way in this new government, which sounds better.
It seems cleaner.
Yeah.
Easier.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah.
Um, okay. I wanted to ask about how you see the balance and the role of police and PSR going forward in the city? What needs, which, which kind of improvement does each need?
So when we think about police, we need a good public safety, nine-one-one, fire and police. As I understand it, we only have around eight hundred and something odd police to take care of all of the city. To me, that's not enough, right?
Yeah.
And for a city this size, it, if you look at comparable cities, that number is around eleven hundred and twelve hundred. And so when you think about, we have big city problems, right? We have things to address. And when we think about what we are asking for police, more community policing, more being present, more all of the things. We have to make sure that they are staffed at a capacity where they can meet those needs. When we think about, you know, it, the, the challenges around um, policing, the culture things, things that we want to work in collaboration with them to address. And, and training, the things that you work in collaboration with them to identify, hey, these are the things that we want to work together to address or support. We, the first thing I think is thinking about the hiring, thinking about, we need more police than eight hundred and something odd police. And that to me is just a fact.
Yeah.
And so um, and the, the move like, I want to see more community policing. I want to see those types of things, but I want, want the bureau to um, really live into that and be supported in doing that. And so um, I don't know what the magic number is, but I personally feel eight hundred and something, I don't have the exact number, is not enough to serve all of us.
Yeah.
Because I want, I want safe policing. I want to see them in the, in the community, building relationships. I want all the things.
Yeah.
Right? Just like everybody else does.
Yeah.
I want when you call nine-one-one, they are properly staffed to answer, you know, the phone. I, I want all the things. And these are folks that all work very hard. I want fire to be. To be properly staffed, to do what they need to do to take care of us. Now Portland Street Response, as I understand it. Was originally created with the mind of that people would be clinicians serving in that role. I think one of the things, I think it's a great idea. I think it needs some tweaking. So I, when I think about um, people calling. Portland Street Response and they come to you and they're not able to transport you to get you services that you may need. I feel like some, that's something we need to figure out. Because I think when people come to you, they're very, they're at their lowest point. They're very vulnerable and they, we need to connect them to the services that they need. And we need to be able to be the ones to take them there.
Yeah, because what a difference that would make, right? If if somebody said, hey, I want help right now with my addiction.
Here's where we're going and to make sure that we have the the infrastructure and the resources set up. I mean, we can go and talk to somebody. But what if they're like, if they're calling or somebody's calling, that person obviously needs help. So how do we help them? And then making sure the folks that are um, working for Portland Street Response. Are very experienced and are clinicians and experienced and we have fentanyl crisis, we have mental health, we have. I want those folks to be very um, experienced in that. So they can effectively help.
Yeah, and if it is, yeah, addiction or mental health, take him to where they need to go if if that's what they want.
If that's what they want, let me come go with me.
Yeah, it seems like that would be.
Take, come go with me.
Yeah, I totally agree, like with both of those, you know, tweaking that. And and the police, it seems like that would help our city tremendously, both of those things.
Yeah, and I think the police and Portland Street Response, it would be very helpful. To both, like Portland Street Response, the the concept is great because it can complement policing.
It alleviates a lot of what they have.
Police are not. Trained to address some of those things. And so it would, it in. In the natural, it would be a good combination. But it's gotta be effective too. Like I just think we need to look at it and we need to make sure that it's operating. And meeting the needs, the gaps.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Uh, I wanted to ask quickly about. Well, let me ask for this phone ban first. The Grant High School Phone Ban Pilot Program they're doing. My understanding too is like they kind of did this, it wasn't official last year, but I had a guest, I had a guest on here who had a student there. And she was saying they've been doing this with like individual classes last year, I guess. But they basically put them in those like shoe holder. Things before they come in class, but now they're gonna do it for the whole school. And I'm curious just what you think about that, if that's a good idea, bad idea.
So for a person that is uh, really supports young people in education and access to career pathways. Again, like I run the youth program at the city, I have for years. I'm the board chair of Cairo's PDX. First school started by women of color preschool through fifth grade for uh, black and brown kids. All are welcome though. And also my role as elected to PCC Board. I think it's a good pilot. Because what we now, we we are so tied to technology. I mean, students do their works on laptops. And their laptops are in the rooms already. You bring your laptop, all of those things. And then you have your phone. And so I I think phones are, can be a distraction. I think when we think about education, especially in. Our public school systems. The numbers, like the the graduation rates, this might increase those things because people are are like. Laser focused. There's no distraction of the phone. If parents or if people need to get in touch with their student. The their landline works in the office and that's still in place. They come and get you out of your class. I like, I like the thought, let's see how it goes. Um, I grew up in a time we didn't have phones. So I, I understand just when I came to school, my job was to be at school. And to be engaged in the class and do whatever the activities were at school. And so um, we. We are so tied to technology and so uh, seven hours a day. Or however many hours that the kids go to school. Um, I, I think it's a, I think it's a good pilot.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's interesting because I, when you were saying that too, I always think about how. Like kids during COVID were just on their phones anyway. They're not, so it's just like.
Did you see I just like held my breath because?
So I I I see it as a good move in that way too of like, we gotta recover some of that lost time and and all that.
And communication, like I feel like um, I work with a lot of young people, right?
Just face-to-face, is that what you're talking about?
And a lot of young people, some are struggling with just communication. Because they're just like this. I have taken young folks out to dinner and they're sitting and they're texting each other when we could just be talking to each other. So what is that?
I've heard that from teachers that kids just do not know how to do face-to-face that that well.
No looking you in the eye when they're talking, no. And so, you know, these are skills that you need. These are good social skills that you need.
Yeah, I was thinking that and also, one of my previous guests brought this up. I kind of would, and I'm just cap joking about this, but I kind of wish that like. If they're gonna do that, that there'd be some fairness and like in the workplace, like maybe you shouldn't have your phone there too. I don't know. And I'll admit, I'm on my phone a lot of work, like it's, you know, it's equally distracting, but um, anyway. Okay, I wanted to ask quickly about, do you have any thoughts or anything you want to say about? How this whole charter reform went and if you change anything going forward. I mentioned you before, I'm doing a panel. It's just a quick plug, but I'm doing a panel on single transferable vote coming up with. Well, Noma County Election Director Tim Scott. So I'm gonna try to answer a lot of these questions about. How our new voting system is gonna work and stuff. But I'm just curious like how. Do you like how it went down and like what what we have now and you're just kind of rolling with it.
I'm rolling with it, but what I like is that um. The one city approach. Like with the turning the um, the the councils. Legislative body, a clear focus, right? And I think it encourages one city and I think it encourages. Many pathways to accountability and transparency. So I like that one city. Approach because I, that's how I personally operate. Um, I think it, it. Helps with collaboration. I think it helps with all of those things. Now, when I think about the ranked choice voting and I'm gonna be really honest, I'm confused too. So I think I'm so glad that you're having um, Tim on to talk about that. Because we need to be really clear about that. I think there was a lot packed into. I think there was a lot packed into it, but it's here now, so. I see my role is doing whatever I can to make sure that it works, right? And things are not gonna be perfect right out of the gate. Like something else I just implemented within the city. Um, is transition ambassadors because one thing that. We are embarking upon a lot of change. And you need an effective change management plan. And so one of the things um, I came across and just thinking about. Peers, supporting peers through the change. There's a lot of generations in the workplace. There's a lot of people that are used to working one way. There's a lot of new people. Then there's the people in between, right? And so all of these changes, these folks work on all questions. That are related to the change, the transition. So if an employee says. I don't really understand the ranked choice voting, then we have a team that they, we refer them to and we have. Videos and things. And so ho- hopefully those folks will take it and share amongst other people within the city. And outside of the city, because there are a lot of changes. And we've got to invest in a strong change management plan to bring people along. That's how this thing's gonna work. You can't make these changes without the people.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great idea. Because because yeah, you can't just snap your fingers and everyone's like, hey, this is what we're doing. There's a little transition time there. So I think that's a good idea.
A lot of transition time, if you think about it. This is the, this is all new. And so I'm just gonna roll with it, but I'm telling you right now in the space in which I sit and how I operate, I identified that need. Like that's thinking about, that's thinking about one city. What do people need to be successful? Because I want the public to say, you know what? They're delivering on the basic services. We are getting the things that we want. We've got accountability. We know where our money's going. We've got excellent customer service. And so what I say, I'm not shooting for perfection all the time, but I do believe we should always be striving to operate in excellence.
When you're just saying that, it just made me think like you just want. You just want what, what it says on the side of the car, the city that works.
I just wanna make sure it's working for everybody, right? I wanna make sure that that I plan to make Portland clean, safe and livable. To house our neighbors. And when I think about housing our neighbors, I have a real focus on folks, the working people that are. Always one paycheck away from losing maybe their housing or rent burden. I have a focus on the older folks that are maybe retired and on a fixed income. Which is the largest demographic net moving to houselessness. How do we work with the state and legislation to? Figure out maybe a voucher program, um, these organizations that provide wraparound services, maybe how do we fund those effectively? So people can get help on their water bill and their phone bill in real time. Um, strengthening our economy, ensuring there's skilled workforce, skilled, skilled workforce is what built the middle class. And we are, we're struggling at the city. How are we gonna replace these folks that are at retirement? So and then just an accessible and accountable budget, where you and I can read and follow. And so those are are the things and uh, that I see. But when we think about this piece, this voting piece. People have to understand this. So every vote is counted and everybody understands. Rank choice and all the other things. So I'm really excited that you're having him on and I'm watching that one myself.
Yeah, that's coming up.
And we do have lots of resources on our website. The county has lots of resources. Um, I'm actually gonna take. Some printout resources that I have to some uh, small businesses that get a lot of foot traffic. Just to make sure people know, because not everybody is tuned in.
I know. It's hard for me, I'm sure me and you, because I'm, it's just. I'm so plugged in and I'm sure you are too, but it's for the average person, they're just like, what the hell is going on, like, you know?
And your average voter, they're not necessarily getting on their laptop and watching videos. They want somebody to talk to them or they want something they can hold and read.
Yeah, there's so many things. I was gonna say, I like how you just unpacked all the like livability and basic service stuff. Because we were talking a little before we recorded about like city vision and stuff and I've had people on here. Like Keith Wilson wants to build like a high-speed rail and stuff like this and, and you were talking about like. A little bit ago, like a sports stadium in downtown maybe. And I think that stuff is so great. And I agree with you and I don't know if this is what you're saying, but once you tackle those basic livability things, I think all that other stuff will just follow.
Yeah, I mean, what what, when you were and I were just talking previously, what I was talking about too is reimagining. What Portland looks like moving forward, right? And so it can be all these things and I don't know what it looks like. But let me give you an example. So I used to go to Detroit, um. Uh, my best friend Cliff Robinson, who played for the Blazers here, he was my best friend for over thirty years. And so when he played in Detroit, their downtown was just done. It was nothing. Um, I recently was in Detroit two Thanksgivens ago. Um, uh, visiting our friends that um, that we have there that used to play for the Pistons, visiting them. And we went downtown and it was like, what?
I've heard they.
I didn't even know, yeah. I didn't even know, what is this the same downtown? And the sports arenas had moved into downtown and housing and restaurants and stuff were built. Around it and it just looked like a whole new place, thriving. And so I don't know what. Our downtown could look like. So I was just throwing it out there, but we need to be reimagining what does Portland look like? Moving forward. I'm a visionary. And so I operate from vision and then I find the most qualified people to fill in the details of the vision. Right? And so what I'm saying, my eyes are wide open. This is an exciting time. And so listening to our people, our businesses, all of our stakeholders and bringing them in. Let's reimagine this place.
Yeah, it is a great kind of opportunity time.
It really is.
It's funny you mention that because I I brought that up. I can't remember who it was and I don't know if this episode came out yet, but I I was. I haven't been to Detroit, but I just had heard that, that they had completely turned around their downtown and.
It's cool.
And I'm I'm the same, on the same page here, like our downtown is so important. I worked downtown for like ten years here. And just to see the the change, uh, like what we see now, it's just, I wanna see that downtown core thriving again. And I agree with you in that like, it's possible. You've seen it happen there and so we know we can do it. It's just.
Yeah, and I just, I at nine years old, used to take the bus from my um, house to school. I went to school on the west side. I lived downtown. My school, my school, I went to school downtown as well. I mean, I lived downtown. I remember when there was a place called the Metro. Might be before you retired.
I don't even remember that, yeah.
Let me tell you, it was so cool. It was on Broadway. And it, you felt like when you walked in there, like you were in France. So they had the black and white checkered floors. And you had the different stations. You had gelato, you had pizza stations, you had food and it was almost like you were in France. It was amazing and it was bustling. I know what our downtown can be. And our downtown is beautiful to me.
It is, yeah.
So I have a love for downtown because that's what I know. And so I just know that every city that is a thriving city, they have a thriving downtown. They have a thriving downtown. They have good public safety. They have good transportation and access. We can have all those things. I love this place.
Yeah, me too. It's a, it's like for a while, like I thought about moving, but I'm just like, I don't. I'm more of on the page of like, I want people like you to revitalize this. You know, yeah. But I've lived here for like twenty years and um. Yeah, I want downtown to be, because I just, like you said, it was thriving, it was bustling. It's not quite there right now. But uh, I think we can get back to that.
Oh, yeah. And it's not, so when I think about, it's not even getting back. We can't go backwards. What does it look like going forward? I'm all about going forward.
Something we haven't even seen.
Right? Yeah. What does it look like? It can be anything.
Yeah, I think that's great. Okay, is there anything other like issue stuff that you want to bring up before I move on to these goofy questions? Things that are important to you or I don't know.
Things that are important to me are the twelve folks. That. Get the opportunity to serve in this new form of government. They have to be able to work together. They have to be able to build relationships. And they have to be out there all the time amongst the people. Because that was one of the things that the people said, they wanted more representation. So we should not be sitting behind our desks. We should be out there with the people. I've already started collecting my tennis shoe game, right? Because we should be boots on the ground. And so that's what I plan to do is to continue. To serve our people in excellence. This is nothing new. The position will be new. But how I serve and how I feel about our people in this city, I've been doing this for over twenty years. And it is a labor of love. And I, I just know how important it is. To have eleven other people that understand that our job is to take care of the people.
Yeah, and I can, I can attest to that just from the short, like, you know, my friend Tiana said she had a great conversation with you for a while. And then you were also at the future Portland thing. I I missed you just a little bit there, but um, I did want to say, when I was there, I heard from a lot of. Just regular, not candidates, but people that were saying they imagined the, what am I saying, voters pamphlet? Just regular, not candidates, but people that were saying they imagined the, what am I saying, Voters Pamphlet? We all just agreed that it's gonna be like a phone book. So I'm so glad that you were able to do this today cuz it's what I'm trying to do is give people something online they can look at before they vote. To check out candidates and stuff, so um, anyway. Is there anything else you wanna add to your Northwest story? You mentioned you you grew up here and all that stuff.
Yeah, I grew up here um in Concordia area. My father owned a barber shop on Union Avenue. Which is now Martin Luther King Boulevard. My mother, she worked her way up at Pacific Northwest Bell. And retiring early and starting a second career as a Realtor. I have a sister that has a catering company and nephew is awesome, a family. I love this place. I was the first Blazer Ball Girl. Is that funny? I got all these little uh.
That makes sense. I was following you on some accounts and how it was Rip City stuff and now that makes a lot more sense.
And so that, you know, that was fun. I was young, that was fun. Um, I'm rooted in community. I spent a lot of time at the barber shop where community came together, told stories, waiting for the perfect haircut. And so all of those fun things, I um serve on board uh Northwest Native Chamber. Cairo's PDX, um Oregon Humanities, um all things that are important to me. I am not creating me right now. I am me. I live amongst the people. I serve the people. I believe in our people. And um one thing that is big to me, your word is all you have, right? And so I value that. I try to always show up in an authentic way. And I operate with integrity and I may get it wrong sometimes, right? But I'm not afraid to make the decisions, the hard decisions, right? And I think we're at a time where we have to be able to make the hard decisions and we have to stand up for people. And we have to say what is right, what we believe is right.
Yeah, I think it's great. Um, one thing we I talk about a lot on this show is like, and I I think it's great you just said that cuz um. It I mentioned this whole era of transparency and stuff and what's really important to me with not only politicians, but just anybody is like. The ability to look at like what's going on and change your mind. And it just sounds like you're that type of person that's like. I'm not gonna just dig my heels in no matter what, I'm gonna look at what's going on and, you know, and especially what people are talking about and what people.
Yeah, and sometimes you have to change your mind. I'm not, and another thing too, I am. A person because you do need to leave room to change your mind and usually people change their mind when they have more education. Around whatever the topic is and I'm not anti anything, so I wanna make. That clear. I'm not anti anything. I'm all about if there's something that we need to. Um, solve, if there's a challenge or a barrier, how do we work together to get that done?
I also think it's cool, I was gonna say that you're, and I'm not trying to throw shade at other candidates, but that you did grow up here because I. There are some people who are kinda newer to the city and personally, I just think it's really important. To see how it's changed cuz I think a lot of people got here in the past like, I don't know, five or six years and it's not quite. You don't have the same picture in your mind of of what the city can be or used to be, but um.
But but there that newness, right, is also um, it can be valuable to too because you don't. And you may have come from a city that that. Different or whatever.
Or it could be like Detroit, you know.
But I I there is something that is very unique about me being born and raised. And understanding the city and working in the city and that's what makes me stand out. Um, as a candidate, that is why I know that I'm qualified to do this job is because of my experience. And I am Portland. You know, I am rooted in community.
You've convinced me today. I mean, you were you were with the Blazers, so come on. Let me get to these some of these goofy questions. Let's say you're parking somewhere like you did a little bit ago, do you normally pull in or do you back in?
Pull in.
Pull in, okay. Most people pull in. Which piece of fruit do you think you could throw the farthest if you just chucked a piece of fruit across a football field?
A grape.
I've never heard that. That's a good one. And that might actually be the great answer, I don't know. Do you like crunchy or smooth peanut butter or maybe you don't like peanut butter?
Smooth.
Okay, do you like the stir or the no stir? Do you like the oil in there?
I like the no stir. I'm not a, I don't eat a lot of peanut butter, but I like it.
I like crunchy, but I I do like no stir. Do you have a favorite type of french fry? Do you like regular fries, curly fries, um crinkle cut, waffle fries?
I like home cut fries, so yeah, the home cut potato.
I'm gonna throw this one, I don't I don't think I've ever asked this one. Do you have a, if you had, if you're on a deserted island, is there like a number one condiment? For me, it's mustard, but I don't know.
Mustard. I'm a mustard.
Alright, I'm with you on that. Let's say you're getting ice cream at Salt and Straw or something, do you go waffle cone, regular cone cup?
Waffle cone.
And what kind of, what are you putting in the waffle cone, what flavor?
I like the thought of ice cream, but I don't eat a lot of it. But vanilla. Vanilla or a mint, a chocolate chip mint or something. I love mint.
Something about that color that's just good too. Do you keep your butter out or do you keep it in the fridge?
Fridge.
I know these are weird questions.
You're gonna ask me my favorite drink? I don't know.
Do you eat, do you like string cheese? Do you use string cheese?
Uh, it's okay.
Do you peel it? I've I've never, I don't know if I've ever got anyone who doesn't.
Well, it's string cheese, so you wanna peel it down and see it do the string thing, yeah, yes. I'm laughing at these questions cuz I'm like.
They're out of left field. This one's more normal. If you had a, and you you already do kinda do this, but if if you were forced to run a huge brand like Nike or something, is there one you'd wanna run? Company like that?
Like a Nike, like those kinda companies?
Just anything, could be, could be like this beverage brand or something, I don't know, just any, is there anything that you grab, like you're a fan of and you'd be like, I could run this thing?
I'm a fan of the city, to be honest. I really am. And I could, yeah, I'm a fan of the city. I could run that city.
So you're saying you could be mayor?
I could be, you know what, I'm a firm believer that I can be anything that I wanna be. That was instilled in me from my parents and so I operate from that space and all you have to do is try and work hard.
I believe, I could see you as mayor. I could see you as mayor one day. Is there, did you have a good meal recently or it doesn't have to be a restaurant or a business you wanna shout out? I just like give people the opportunity to shout out a local business.
I go to a lot of places. I got a lot of favorites. So my uh. Regular go to favorite is Chris Chris Salad on Williams Avenue. That's just like my go to. But there's a lot of, a lot of great restaurants. Um, Ox is a great restaurant. There is, oh, I like um, you know, like bar food places. All up and down Alberta, all of those places. God, there's so many. Oh, you know what I went to recently? What I went to recently, I went to Gabiano's recently over thirtieth and and Killingsworth Italian spot. Yeah, it was pretty good. I go to so many restaurants and now I'm like drawing a blank. There's a little taco place called La Talk. On Killingsworth and then I like La Serenita on Alberta. There's a, they're a great family there.
These all sound good, yeah, they're making me.
Yeah, I could just, you know, I could think, um, I like uh Post Shines. Um, when you want a little bit of soul food, I like Post Shines over there. Yeah, there's so many.
Well, yeah, shout out to them, yeah. All those, that's not good. Um, and I'll just do this spiel before I say where can people donate, I'll donate to you because I like to plug the matching program. I think that's a great thing. So I'll give you a donation, but where, if people like what you're saying, where can they donate?
So you can visit um Tiffany for PDX dot com. That's T I F F A N I F O R P D X dot com.
Nice. And yeah, I think you can find all the other info and stuff there and.
Yes, you can. And I also can be contacted. There's ways to get in touch with me and I welcome that. Because I do like people. I like face to face communication.
That's why I do that. I've never done a Zoom. I hate doing Zoom stuff, but um.
Zoom can be challenging.
But I appreciate you coming today. Um, yeah, is there anything else you wanna say before we wrap it up here?
Just thank you and I would be honored to have people support and vote. I am your person.
Well, you've convinced me to, if I was in your district, I'd vote for you, but like I said, I'll give you a donation.
Thank you so much. It was so nice meeting you.
Yeah, it was nice to meet you too and thanks for coming out.